Let us start our part about administration of justice and legal administration. Let us welcome from the D of J, um, the, um, uh, S for J, um, as well as judicial administrator. Well, members who request to speak press the request to speak button. And then I will give you due course, due time to speak afterwards. Over to you, S J.
Thank you, Chair. As Hong Kong transition from the new era of stability to prosperity, the Director of Department of Justice will fully support and promote Hong Kong's unique advantages under one country to systems where we firmly uphold Hong Kong's common law system, the draft deal with the country's strategic planning to boost our impetus to prosperity. To this end, D F J will proactively implement measures to consolidate the rule of law, which is also our core value in order to create more development opportunities for the legal sector. Internally, we will strengthen the rule of law education to raise a public's awareness. And externally, we will give full play to our unique advantages in legal and dispute resolution services to underpin Hong Kong's position as an international legal and dispute resolution services center in order to integrate into the country's overall development. The draft estimates of twenty twenty-three, twenty-four for the Department of Justice is about two billion four hundred twenty-nine point two million dollars. Given that the allocation for the previous year, that is twenty-two, twenty-three, was not fully utilized because of the impact of COVID nineteen, as shown in the revised estimates. The draft estimates for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four is twenty-six point eight percent over the revised estimate, but only slightly over the original estimate for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three by three point four percent. I can see from the questions raised over the draft estimates, the members have three main concerns. They are the rule of law education, promotion of our legal and dispute resolution services, and grooming of legal talent. Let me go through these three points first. On the promotion of the Constitution, Basic Law, National Security on the Rule of Law Education. To enhance the community's understanding of the Constitution, Basic Law, and N S L and the Rule of Law, the Department of Justice earlier this year set up the Steering Committee on Rule of Law Education, chaired by myself as the S for J, and with representatives from relevant bureaus, the judiciary, the legal sector, and the law schools. We met for the first time in February and agreed to set up two working groups to promote the Rule of Law Education Train the Trainers Program to implement the Rule of Law Education to nurture a consistent and correct sense of the Rule of Law in all sectors of society. Meanwhile, we will continue to support activities how to promote understanding of the Constitution, B L, N S L, the Rule of Law among young people and the general public to strengthen the Rule of Law as a core value of Hong Kong. We will continue to organize a variety of promotional activities through working with related organizations. We lead delegations of the sector to visit ASEAN and other countries to tell good and accurate stories of Hong Kong, which include our strong and robust legal system and the solid Rule of Law Foundation. We will hand home to them the message about roles and advantages under the Belt and Road initiatives and G B A development, which are national strategies of the country. We established in January the Guangdong-Hongkong-Macau G B A Task Force to study issues such as enhancing legal assistance, convergence of legal practices within the G B A, and also to set up a common online dispute resolution platform. As we're improving our legal framework, the arbitration outcome-related fee structure of arbitration rules came into effect on the sixteenth of December last year. We will seek to commence the mainland judgment in civil and commercial matters, reciprocal enforcement ordinance soon as possible, and to sign relevant agreements with the mainland authorities to this effect. And with the support of the central government, the International Organization for Mediation and Proprietary Affairs, our start of operation in February in Hong Kong Legal Hub will give full support to the work of the officers. Now, in February, we announced that the pilot scheme on facilitating for persons participating in arbitration procedures in Hong Kong will be extended and expanded for two years. Qualified persons from other jurisdictions, including the mainland, Macau, and Taiwan can come as visitors on a short-term basis to participate in Hong Kong without any employment visa. And we'll continue to implement some common programs with other international organizations for legal local talents, and we will use the understudy program and professional exchange program to continue to provide training opportunities. Now, we will take forward the various policy areas of the department through various measures, including helping the Superior of Law Reform Commission for systemic review of our statute of law, and will ensure sustainable development of the sector and to enhance the rule of law in Hong Kong. Thank you. I now give the floor to the Judiciary Administrator.
J A. The draft estimates of twenty twenty-three to twenty-four for the judiciary is two point four eight one billion dollars, an increase of one hundred thirty-three point nine million dollars, or five point seven percent from the revised estimates for twenty twenty-two to twenty-three. On judicial manpower, the establishment of judicial posts now stands at two hundred and eleven, while the number of serving judges and judicial officers, J J O, is one hundred and sixty-six. Over, over the past years, the judiciary has been launching open recruitment exercises fulfilling judicial vacancies at appropriate timing. Having regard to the judicial manpower situation, operational needs at different levels of courts, three judges of a court of first instance of the High Court, C F I, six district judges, and ten permanent magistrates were recruited during the latest round of recruitment exercise. The judiciary will continue to monitor the judicial manpower situation and engage double T J J Os to meet operational needs as far as practicable on non-judicial manpower. For non-judicial manpower in twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, there will be a net decrease of three civil service posts due to the lapse of three time-limited civil service posts. In addition, following a review of our overall manpower requirements, thirteen civil service posts will be created for meeting operation, operational needs, including, A, the introduction of the pilot scheme to enhance mediation services for the family court, and B, providing enhanced support for the use of information technology in the judiciary. The resources required will be absorbed internally through the deletion of a comparable number of civil service posts. In twenty twenty-two, we managed to handle an overall caseload comparable to the pre-COVID level in twenty nineteen. The target court waiting times for civil cases have generally been achieved. On criminal cases, some hearings needed to be re-fixed because of the epidemic, coupled with the increasing caseload relating to anti-extradition amendment bill or N T E A B cases and N S L cases. The waiting times for some types of criminal cases at various levels of court continue to exceed the relevant targets. The judiciary continued to accord priority and devote extra efforts to handling these national security and N T E A B cases, many of which involve a large number of defendants in lengthy trials. Through a multi-pronged approach, through increasing and making full use of judicial manpower and resources, cases have been handled as soon as practicable. As at late January twenty twenty-three, ninety percent of over two thousand two hundred N T E A B cases and around eighty percent of some one hundred and seventy N S cases brought to various levels of court had been concluded. Among them, the District Court is still hearing one hundred and thirty N T E A B cases, the bulk of which were brought to the court only last year, that is twenty twenty-two. The vast majority of cases have been set down to be heard this year and next year. Since priority has to be accorded to N T E A B cases involving longer case management and lengthy trials, the waiting times for other criminal cases in District Court and the magistrate courts have inevitably been lengthened. N S L cases are mainly heard in the High Court. And because every case is usually heard before a panel of three judges, and because the trial length is longer, other criminal cases have also been inevitably affected as to listing. We will continue to increase judicial manpower through the recruitment of permanent J J Os as well as engagement of deputies to expedite the handling of the relevant criminal cases. Leave applications for judicial review relating to non-reforming claims. The number of applications to the C F I for leave to apply for judicial review increased from some two hundred and thirty in two thousand and sixteen to over three thousand in twenty nineteen, before decreasing to one thousand five hundred and forty-five in twenty twenty-two. Over ninety percent of the increase have to do with non-reforming claims. The percentage of leave granted in relation to non-reforming claims J R cases remains at a very low level. As at late January twenty twenty-three, only three point nine percent of these cases disposed were approved. The judiciary will continue to deploy additional and dedicated manpower resources and streamline processing procedures as far as possible to expedite the handling of cases. On greater use of technologies, the judiciary is committed to making greater use of technology to enhance efficiency of court business. In twenty twenty-three to twenty-four, the estimated recurrent expenditure relating to I C T initiatives is around two hundred and seventy million dollars, accounting for eleven percent of the total estimated operating expenditure of the judiciary. The average change in increase in the past five years is around twenty percent. In recent years, the judiciary launched a number of new initiatives. One key initiative is the development of an integrated court case management system, or I C M S in short, across various court levels by phases for handling court-related documents and payments through an electronic mode as an option to the traditional paper-based system. This I C M S system has been implemented in District Court and the magistrate courts, respectively, from May twenty twenty-two and December twenty twenty-two. We aim to roll out the I C M S for public use at other levels of courts incrementally from twenty twenty-four. To facilitate a quicker and moderate adoption of technology in court operations, the judiciary aims to ultimately make the I C M S the primary litigation system in Hong Kong. We are considering setting a target timeframe, such as a period of three to five years from the rolling out of the relevant parts of a new system for requiring all represented litigants to conduct their litigations electronically, unless otherwise exempted in particular circumstances. We will conduct full consultation with the legal profession and other stakeholders on the implementation arrangements, and we will also put in place safeguards for the right of access to court. We will also continue with our efforts on the promotion and publicity of the I C M S. So far, over one thousand six hundred remote hearings, including video conferencing and phone hearings, have been conducted for civil proceedings since April twenty twenty, and the experience has been positive. The judiciary is working on the draft court's remote hearing bill to provide the court with the flexibility to order remote hearings as it sees fit, having regard to all relevant factors as well as due requirements of open justice and fairness. We conducted a three-month public consultation on the draft remote hearing bill in June twenty twenty-two, and we aim to introduce the remote hearing bill into the legislature within this year. In addition, the judiciary is now examining the guiding principles as well as implementation practicalities of live broadcasting of court proceedings, with a target to introduce on pilot basis live broadcasting of at least some court proceedings or at some court levels within this year if practicable. Lastly, the judiciary is now testing the voice recognition software products in the market, particularly in respect of the accuracy of voice recognition, especially in plenty hearings, with the hope of making use of this artificial intelligence technology for recording court proceedings where appropriate in the longer term. The Family Procedure Bill has been introduced into the legislature in March this year. The Family Procedure Bill seeks to legislate for a consolidated set of procedural rules to enhance the efficiency and cost-effectiveness of the family justice system. Subject to the pass, subject to the passage of the legislation, the Family Procedure Rules Committee will be formed to prepare the draft procedural rules. Moreover, a new master system will be established in the family court under which family masters will be empowered to handle certain procedural work on family-related proceedings to alleviate the heavy workload of family judges. Overall, the judiciary will continue to endeavor to explore feasible ways and avenues to enhance the efficiency of the judiciary administration, providing better quality services to court users in the public. There are six members online.
Thank you, Ms. Leng. Now, we have six members, as I said, and each can have five minutes. I read out the order, Ms. Yung Hui Man, Ms. Khan, Mr. Holden Chow, Dr. Brazil La La, Mr. Sunny Tan, and Mr. Adrian, Adrian Ho. Ms. Eunice Young, thank you, Chair. I will first ask two questions. The first relates to S J O O four, the application of technology. Let me declare interest. I, from time to time, I receive brief dial cases from the D F J, and I have the opportunity to work at the Prosecution Office of D F J. So I do have the opportunity to use such computer systems, and I'm going to talk about my personal experience. The reason why I asked this question is, now, in the Criminal Prosecution Division, I think there is a major problem. Most of the computers cannot link up with their ancillary equipment, including the printer. So I asked the Prosecution Division, what's the problem? So I was told that, now, according to the reply in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, there are seventy computers replaced. But I'd like to know whether all of them will be allocated to courts above the Court of First Instance, because I was told that the old computers are being recycled from the magistratees. So although seventy computers have been procured, do you know where and how they will be allocated? Can they be allocated to different courts? And do you have a mechanism of phasing out old or used computers? So, now, very often, even for colleagues working there, they need to use new computers to help. Most of them have to work until six or seven P M. So although you're going to procure seventy computers, I'd like to know how you use it. And the second is J A O two four, and this is a question for the Judiciary Administrator. This morning, we read from the news that defendant absconded from the Western Magistrate. So while forty millions are allocated to you, I don't see how or whether they're allocated to boost security. You may be improving your equipment and computer system, but in terms of improvement, or you are spending money on improving the procedures and hearing of cases, et cetera. I think there are problems because a defendant fled. Today, we should not blame it all on the police and also the immigration department, because there should be collaboration with the judiciary. You have to focus on this as well. So on the question of a defendant absconding, now you are going to spend forty-one million dollars on technology. Will you try to improve your current security arrangements? All right, S J, two questions.
Thank you, Ms. Eunice Young, for your question. Your question relates to upgrading of our computer system. First, I will talk about our policy. All along, the D F J has been improving and upgrading the case management system. The purpose is to enhance the operational efficiency of our system. Now, in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, we have planned to conduct a systemic upgrade, covering both the software and hardware. There will be added functions to facilitate the storage of function and sharing of information and for consolidation of information to improve the processing and workflow. The work is in progress. We may need extra resources, but just to quote an example. Now, starting from twenty twenty onwards, we have been upgrading our computers. For instance, seventy-seven computers were replaced in twenty twenty, twenty-one, and then here, on here, we have been upgrading and maintaining our computer devices. I understand that Ms. Yung thinks that our computer system still has room for improvement. Yes, we have a continuous improvement program. Hopefully, come next year, members will be able to see improvements. What about security? Will that be taken up by the Judiciary Administrator? Thank you. Regarding security at our courts, Ms. Yung asked about our spending on technology. The purpose is to support of the application of technology at different levels of court. Security of courts has got another head, subhead. Now, for courts, we directly employ security guards. We outsourced security services, and this can be found in the recurrent expenditure of the judiciary. In the past couple of years, to boost security at courts, we have put in place extra measures such as the installation of C C T Vs, and then security checking is more extensive. In the past, we covered only some of the courts, but we are gradually carrying out security checks at all courts. Now, in joint use of buildings of at the appropriate floors, we undergo security checks. We have added equipment, X-ray scanning machine, and metal detectors, et cetera, and we are spending more on such items. And for cases that attract public attention, we maintain close liaison with the police. When necessary, we invite the police to increase presence. So we have never been complacent, and we do not just, we are not spending that twenty-seven, two hundred and seventeen million dollars on security. We have extra provision for that. With regard to incidents you mentioned, if departments concerned feel that there is anything we need to put in place in our courts to boost security, we are willing to discuss and carry out feasible measures. Thank you, Ms. Khan and Ken.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on my own two questions. J A one oh one, and then S J oh eleven. Now, for J A ten oh one oh, I've been asking this question for a number of years. Now, since the introduction of national security law in twenty twenty, it's been three years. On the training of judges. Now, according to the paper in the Judiciary Institute, there are seven to support eleven staff members. Now, since the introduction of N S L, now in, there've only been four rounds of training sessions, one related to N S L. And it's mentioned here that there are a number of factors on the number of turnout, and it depends on whether the court feels there is the need. Now, looking back, now, for some of the cases, for instance, the appointed judges should have sought a certificate from the Chief Executive. Does it shows that our judges do not have a proper understanding of the N S L? Another question is S J oh one one, and that is integration into the country's overall development and our development into an international legal and dispute resolution services center. Now, we have set up a task force, and these are good measures. But the S for J has not told us how many of our local lawyers are now qualified to practice in the G B A. I think the S J should work together with the sector to develop the G B A. Will you compile statistics related to participation in the lawyer's examination? S J.
Thank you. I thank Ms. Khan for your question. I think you have highlighted a salient point. It's not just about the D F J. It's not just the development of the legal sector. The G B A development is our future focus. We want to build Hong Kong into an international legal and dispute resolution center, and it's important that we use the G B A to nurture local talent. I support the legal sector to set for the examination. I can't speak for others, for, for one, myself, myself has passed the examination. Now, our colleagues are very busy in the work. I fully understand. But if their schedule permits, I encourage them to have a better understanding of the legal system of the G B A. I will try to compile more statistics as far as possible to give an account to the council, and it's also useful for internal information. And so I may be able to boost our effectiveness in this regard.
I fully agree with Ms. Khan. That is the importance of talent training. Let me declare interest. I have the practicing qualification in the mainland. And then, Ms. Stalung, thank you. Now, the Judiciary Institute is part of the judiciary, but then the training of judges is mainly led by the Chief Justice of the High Court. And he leads a monitoring committee to work out the training programs annually for judges. Now, when it comes to appointed judges, they are our serving judges. As far as I understand, the Judiciary Institute provides training programs on the general procedures of court. Aside from twenty twenty-one, they have started a series of thematic seminars covering the basic law and the N S L. There are four altogether. We're not going to stop at that. The Judiciary Institute will continue to organize seminars and exchange activities. The attendance cover all levels of court judges, and there are also representatives from the D of J. We'll continue to do this. Thank you. Thank you. Now, I'd like to point out that I think their answer has been too general. Every time, they would tell us that there are four seminars, but if we go through the document, only the first is on the Constitution, the B L N L S, and the second are the M P C, and the third are mutual legal assistance, and the fourth is the civil courts. So I hope the Hong Kong Judicial Institute can be given this message. They should consider this. The understanding and interpretation of the N S L by our appointed judges, they should be subject to dedicated training so that they can have a proper interpretation of the N S L. So, Ms. Khan, I think she has hammered a very clear message, and I believe the J has already got that message.
Thank you, Chairman. I have two questions. One, J A oh oh four. Second, J A oh oh five. Both of them were asked by me. First on oh oh four. Since in the middle of last year, the judiciary issued new practice directions setting down the time of handing down judgment. This is indeed something good. It was criticized that there was a prolonged delay in handing down the judgment, supplanting the confidence of many court users. And indeed, this is a problem. In J A oh oh four, since last year, for example, fifteen days for the Court of First Instance, within six months, the judgment has to be handed down. And I noticed in the reply that almost all cases in lower courts basically met the requirements, but that is almost all. That means that there might be a small portion of cases that have failed to do so. I'd like to understand, do you have any rationale for these sporadic cases so that the public will have an idea of the ratio of cases that have not met the relevant requirement? We hope that in the future, we will meet these targets. So on manpower, what is your evaluation? Can you meet all these criteria in the longer term? That is J A oh oh. That is J A oh oh four, for J A oh oh five. For the Integrated Court Case Management System, in short, I C M S. The judiciary has put in place this system sometime earlier. And this system should move with the times. In the district court, for the time being, only seven percent or so cases have used the I C M S. And of course, I understand that within three to five years, the judiciary would like to. Roll out these I C M S across all levels of courts for small to medium sized law firms. Will you help them to make use of the I C M S? Including the use of Hong Kong Law Tech Fund during the epidemic. Each law firm was given five, well, fifty thousand dollars. I believe for major firms, they will be able to do that, but what about small to medium firms? You can expedite the progress. Thank you, Chairman. J A, Ms. Estelar, please. Thank you, Chairman. On the first question regarding the timetable of setting down the time for judgment. As I said, the vast majority of cases, after the issuance of practice directions. Thirty-five and thirty-seven, both of them have met the requirements. There were actually less than ten cases in which there were special circumstances. Leading to the, leading to the delayed delivery of judgment. I am confident that for other levels of court, we will be able to adhere to this timetable. On judicial manpower vacancies, we will continue with our recruitment exercise in order to fill the vacancies. The second question on the I C M S, Mr. Houdun Chow, you are correct in understanding that in twenty twenty-two. It was rolled out and we are still rolling it out in phases, the percentage is rather low right now. On legal practitioners, as in late February, fifty odd law firms. Have already registered, but then we have nine hundred odd law firms. The reason is, I believe that we have not put in place this system in all levels of court. We also provide an option for court users, that is to say, they have the freedom to decide when they will use it. Well, actually, they can register first. And when you need to create a case, then legal practitioners can come back to the system to create a case and make use of all the functions. We will give more introductions to the system. We have an I C M S help center. And we can give you instructions. This does not require special software, as long as you have internet connection, then you can use the I C M S. Is there, is there any subsidy, it was mentioned by the government? And the judiciary is not in the position to give comments on this. Doctor Priscilla Leng, my question. Based on J eight oh one seven, J eight oh one nine. And J A oh, and S J oh two four. My question in relation to J eight zero one seven. What is the manpower in relation to the divorce separation cases? Are the figures. Are the figures included? I'd like to have more figures and information in this connection. And for S J eight oh one nine. Recently, a lot of cases are related. On the constitutional order on national security cases. In some judgments, there may not be full understanding. In the Department of Justice, foreign lawyers, which is talk of the town. The perspective of national security was not mentioned in the first and the second trial or the hearing. For example, for a handbag. Full of Hong Kong independence words, some people make public. This handbag and some people were actually charged on theft. This is just an analogy. And this is necessarily related to the issue of national security. So, when you start handling the case. For the lawyers in the D O J. Do they have sufficient understanding of the constitutional order, national security law and the relevant legal principles? Secondly, what about manpower? Do you have sufficient manpower? Now that we have a great many requests, including requests relating to J J Os. The reply was rather abstract. And we will be glad to see if both of you would like to increase manpower by recruiting. More people in order to solve the problem proactively. If I did not mishear it. Too many J Rs will also have a bearing on the progress of criminal cases. Some cases took a very long time. Whether prosecution should be started, how the prosecution should be carried on. Therefore, I am particularly concerned about training. I myself have been teaching in the Faculty of Law for three decades or so. A lot of legal graduates are actually. Very ambitious, they would like to join the government and I hope that there will be measures to attract these talents to join the government. Secretary for Justice, do you want to take the question first? Well, I will take the question. Thank you, Secretary. Doctor Leng's question is close to my heart as well. On talents, a lot of law graduates would like to join the D O J. And this is in line with our expectations. On an annual basis, we attract quite a lot of um law graduates. Last year, we recruited some eighty graduates to join the D O J, but then there is no room for complacency, actually. We have a lot of manpower challenges, we have manpower crunches. We have different areas of work. That are related to what Doctor Leng mentioned. We in Hong Kong have been mentioning talent for talents, but then D O J needs to attract law graduates. Or, or we need to attract outsiders to join the government. Doctor Leng mentioned some prosecution cases. On individual cases, I'm not in the position to give you a detailed account, but by and large. For new recruits handling prosecution cases, we have a very systematic training. Led by experienced prosecutors. We have even arranged for very experienced litigation professionals or advocacy professionals. To hold regular events, to groom whether internal talents or even counsel on fiat. We want to improve our quality in this connection and we will continue to improve this front. Thank you, Doctor Leng, for your question. On the redeployment of resources, we hope. That you will lend us a sympathetic ear when it comes to the deployment of resources. I myself am also a practicing barrister. Will you also invite experts on the constitutional order or national security law? Well, this will help broaden the scope. J A, Ms. Esther Leng, can you answer briefly? Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Doctor Leng. On the issue you mentioned, how many cases have entered Hong Kong? It came into effect in January twenty twenty-two, as at late January twenty twenty-three. The judiciary receive, received a total of nineteen cases in this connection. And we will closely monitor judicial manpower in order to handle these cases. Next, Mr. Sunny Tang. I'd like to follow up on S J eight oh three oh. Thank you for your reply, Secretary. It was mentioned that quite a lot of organizations or bodies have already established presence in Hong Kong. Hong Kong would like to become a center for international legal and dispute resolution services in the Asia-Pacific region. And you have been working very hard in this connection, the reason visit is a very successful start. In order to help the legal sector to grasp the, the opportunities in relation to Belt and Road Initiative. Do you have any more concrete grand scheme? In relation to International Arbitration Council. The office will be turned into a secretariat and headquarters for the International Arbitration. Council. What is the role and function of the secretariat? Thank you for international arbitrators. Um. The International Mediation Office started in February. And we have commissioned some colleagues to take part in this scheme. As we need to discuss an international agreement. And we target other regions. It aims at resolving international conflicts. By way of mediation. You may understand that if we have to discuss international agreements. Actually, we have to do a lot of lobbying and we also need to put our heads together. It is very difficult to set a timetable when we just get started. If the C P G has injected confidence in us. I hope that we will deliver results as soon as possible. But I hope that you will understand, we will not achieve great results overnight. We will work hard anyway. In relation to arbitration and Belt and Road Initiative, how can we better leverage our position of arbitration? First of all, we need to improve our law, we need to perfect it. First, we have talents. Second, we have a well-founded arbitration mechanism. Especially one that is closely related to mainland, we have to attract them. Last year, we introduced that we have arbitration mechanism. Under which the competitiveness of Hong Kong will be enhanced. By way of putting in place an outcome-related mechanism. Quite a lot of bodies in this connection have already established presence in Hong Kong. And we would like to have international organizations to come to Hong Kong in order to build a focus in Hong Kong. It is like snowball, the more people come to Hong Kong, the more confidence people have in Hong Kong. They know that Hong Kong is full of legal talents. There are different branches that would like to establish presence in Hong Kong and we will do more in this regard. We will tell the good stories of Hong Kong by making visits and we need to tell them proactively. We need to tell good stories proactively.
Thank you. We have three more members. Well, we overrang a little bit and we didn't allow time for our staff to take a short break. All right, I'd like to know whether we have more after this three. If there isn't any, then we will end the session after these three speakers, Mr. Adrian Ho. I'd like to follow up on S J oh oh nine, my own question. In his reply, the S J. I mentioned the online dispute resolution and deal-making platforms launched last year. It's been half a year and so far, the platform hasn't dealt with any disputes yet. So I'd like to understand from the S J. Uh do we have any inquiries from uh parties of disputes? And has the administration assessed whether uh the platform has been sufficiently publicized? So the more parties will use the online platform. And as the COVID nineteen epidemic eases. What will be the future direction of the online dispute resolution platform? And what about the seventy million dollars assigned from the anti-epidemic fund? S J, in whatever order you choose to take the questions. Uh yes, the question relates to the I B R A M Center. Which may be familiar to members already, it is an independent entity. Earlier on, with the approval of the council, we provided funding to I B R A M Center. Now, our role is, uh apart from providing of resources. We also signed an agreement with I B R A M Center. And the operation will be done by the I B R A M Center. And then the deputy S J under my direction. Has been liaising very closely with the I B R A M Center. To review. Uh the uh track recorder and also how we can improve in the future. Now, there are two independent platforms and so far, they haven't dealt with a single case. And we have to find out why, because the platforms have just been newly set up. And publicity is what should follow, we have to tell. People the advantages of using the platform. And this is exactly what the D O J and the board of the I B R A M Center are doing. We have to understand that having the platform is one thing, but attracting business is the next step. I understand that the center is uh formulating plans and we will give appropriate advice. To see how we can publicize the platform. As regards uh the um online or COVID nineteen online dispute resolution scheme. I think a few cases have been settled involving a few millions of dollars. As the epidemic eases, I believe the demand for related resolution services will fall. And the money has been spent on development of technologies such as uh setting up a cloud. I can guarantee that where possible, oh, we will ensure that the money is well spent. And can serve its original purpose. Any follow-up? Not for the time being. Thank you. Um, Dr. Martineau, thank you. I'd like to follow up on. S J oh two five. It's also related to the question of I B R A M. In the secretary's reply for S J oh two five. I B R A M has launched a few platforms for dispute resolution. But only a very limited number of cases have been handled. Now, there is the COVID O D R platform. It's been three years since it started, but only twenty-eight disputes have been handled. Involving an amount of two point eight two million dollars. And then uh the um platform uh for a dispute dispute resolution platform must be announced. But has never dealt with any case for the International Arbitration Center. In twenty twenty, it dealt with seventy-seven cases involving fifty-four point six billion dollars. I think the two are very different. Now, according to a survey by the Board of AIPAC, most of Asia Pacific um. Company, economic corporation, many, very few people use this platform. Is it because our own platform is not competitive enough? And the second question. Is, according to the reply, the government is going to use existing resources to promote law tech application. Do we need to provide more information, more resources to promote the online platforms? Uh, because the secretary did not mention resources required. And would there be any K P I's for promotion of law tech? S J, thank you. Doctor Liu, for your question. Again, it's about EBRAM. The observations by Doctor Liu is also my concerns. If we just look at the figures, it appears that not too many people have used the online platforms. We've tried to find out the reasons from the uh from EBRAM. So I was told in the past few years, they have spent time establishing the platform. Because. It's a system, so it must be well-designed in order to be effective. In the past few years, they devoted a lot of energy in improving the platform. Now, they've already completed that process. Uh, looking back. They should have done a better job in promotion. And publicity. I know they have adopted uh some ways and means such as taking out advertisements and also. Uh, briefings, professional seminars, but I think they should do a bit more. In my reply to another member, the uh D F J is doing this. Although it is an independent entity in our agreement with EBRAM. They need to report to us on a regular basis, and we can advise. On their operation. So recently, we have strongly urged. EBRAM to be more proactive in promoting the platforms. We maintain very close liaison with EBRAM. We believe that very soon. Now, I understand that they um putting together uh an account to us. And I believe they will work better in terms of publicity. I believe that if they. Publicize the platforms better, I'm confident that we're going to handle more cases. And as for the use of technology within the D F J, we also attach importance to that. This year, we very much hope that we can set up a resolved dispute resolution for G B A, one of an online platform. The task force of G B A has. This objective, they would like to discuss with G B A authorities to establish an online platform. Further discussion is required with the development of the G B A. I'm sure there will be more opportunities for developing online platforms. Thank you. The last speaker for this session, Mister Tony Z. Thank you, Chair. I have three questions to follow up. Number. S J O three three. S J O three four. And S J O three five. I'm not too happy with the replies for the three questions because um there is a precious little in the content, and there are no statistics. First, uh, J. S J O three three. That is a wastage of professionals, legal professionals in the D F J. The reasons for the wastage, I don't see any quoted in the reply. Have they left because of immigration or retirement? The D F J. Hasn't even analyzed the reasons for the living, they're leaving. So I hope the administration can supplement. And the second question is S J O three four. Some estimates. Uh, it is said that spending in certain areas uh was lower. And so they revised estimates were lower than the original. Of course, I know, I know that. But I'd like to know the reasons for the reduced expenditure. Now, if you are so inaccurate in making estimates, perhaps there is room for improvement. Otherwise, where's the point of making estimates? You might as well uh inflate your estimates in the future and revise it afterwards. And the third question is S J O three five. Legal advice provided by the Prosecution's Divisions. Division. Now, you have an performance pledge. For instance, fourteen days. Of course, if the case is complicated, you cannot provide a piece of detailed legal advice within fourteen days. That is understandable. Since you cannot meet the. Since the compliance rate is so low, can you adjust the? Pledge. For instance, instead of fourteen days, you can lengthen it. If you cannot achieve the target, perhaps you should revise or review your target. Or is it because you haven't been efficient enough? It is said by many departments that it takes years for them to get legal advice from the D F J. I have encountered similar cases. Uh, the reply I got was no instruction yet.
Secretary, please. Three question. The first one is in relation to talents. Thank you for your concern. Of course, we have the overall wastage figure last year, having included. All posts, be they civil servants or non-civil servants, those who left the service numbered ninety odd. There were eighty odd applicants. Not a great difference. What about the breakdown? Of course, we have the figures in relation to retirees. I cannot give you a figure off the top of my head right now. What about those leaving the service? Well, when it comes to this, it is very difficult for us to sound out the reason or or to explore the reason. They have the right to bring the employment relations to a close. And when they choose to leave, they may not be willing to share the reason behind with us. So objectively, this is not easy. But I believe this is not. A question. That only the DOJ is facing. It also applies to other companies. But when I left the service, my head of grade also asked me about the reason why I left. Well, when it comes to my own department, it is of course natural for us to retain the colleague. We will ask the colleague the reason why they choose to leave, if they do not like the department or position. There are actually successful examples in which they were redeployed to other sections. We are proactively retaining talents, and we will make the most appropriate arrangements. When it comes to the discrepancies in estimates, there are two main reasons. First, about the epidemic, it does play a role. It affected hearings. It affected expenditure on hearings and that on counsel on fiat. Litigation expenses reduced by two hundred million or so. And there was also a decrease of one hundred and fifty million or so, totaling four hundred million dollars. Because of the epidemic, court business was. Actually. Not in operation. Whether the court diary could accommodate us, and it would also have a bearing on the expenditure on litigations and counsel on fiat. We work very hard on the estimate, but then these are actually not easy, and I hope that you will understand the nature of the estimate. And the fact that it is difficult for us to have an accurate estimate. Litigations are actually passive. Not least civil cases. What cases will there be? Will there be any discrepancy between the situation in fact and our expectations? It is difficult to estimate these numbers. In relation to the performance pledge of fourteen days. We actually met the target. For example, within fourteen days, we replied in acknowledgement of receipt. At least we have preliminary communication with the party. So. I think this is still meaningful for us to have a preliminary communication with the party. For very simple matters, of course, we could finish it within a very short period period of time. But in legal matters, could be very much complicated, and we may need to go back and forth to obtain more instructions. To take more instructions, to give legal advice. Therefore, it is very difficult to give. A very firm pledge, but with. A primary target, it is meaningful. It still serves some purpose. Our target is, after all, both parties will be prepared. As to when there will be a reply. But when it comes to how we can implement these, we will conduct more reviews. We have taken your comments on board, Chairman. Well, I'm just being practical. Let's be pragmatic. There are other areas of work as well. Will the pledge of fourteen days be a false hope to other people? Well, I understand that our colleagues actually work very hard. But then the other party would also like to know around what time they will receive a reply. And we have to strike a balance between the actual situation and our estimate. Targets have to be achievable after all. Thank you, Secretary for Justice and J A. This session will come to a close, and the next section will start at four thirty-five. Thank you.